Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County, welcome to this candidate forum with candidates running for Puyallup School District School Board, Director Position One and Position Four. My name is Carla Larkins. I will be your moderator today. Also with us is Noel Haggins, who will be the timer. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our mission is defending democracy and empowering voters. We hold candidate forums as a service to the public to provide voters with an opportunity to compare and contrast candidates before casting their votes. The League also influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is open to any person aged 16 and older who subscribes to the purpose and policies of the League and includes men as well as women. Before we begin the opening statements and questions, I will give the land acknowledgement. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples, surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The candidates for Puyallup School District School Board Director Position One in alphabetical order are Ellen Aronson and Melissa Bedford. And for Position Four, the candidates are David Berg and William Rowland. Before we begin, the candidates have been given ground rules in advance, which include, among other provisions, that they will adhere to the rules of common courtesy and will not comment on the other candidates, but will focus on the issues and that there will be no additional recordings made of this forum. Could you please confirm with a thumbs up or a nod that each of you has agreed to our ground rules? Thank you. As a reminder, please keep your microphone muted when it's not your turn to speak. For the audience, if you have questions for the candidates, you may text them to Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be consolidated or reworded. Candidates will be timed as they answer and may finish short sentences once the timer stops, but may not continue to speak after that. All candidates will be asked the same questions and have the same amount of time to answer. So we talked about the timer. Just confirm that you have seen it or seen the cards. Okay, thank you. Let's begin. The candidates for Puyallup School District School Board Director Position One in alphabetical order are Ellen Aronson and Melissa Bedford. And for Position Four, the candidates are David Berg and William Rowland. Each candidate will give an opening statement of up to two minutes. At the end, the candidates will give closing statements of up to one minute. Now we'll start with Ellen Aronson, who will give an opening statement.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ellen Aronson, and I'm running for Position One for Puyallup School Board. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Voting is a passion that is near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk and connect with voters. I'm running for Puyallup School Board because I have a passion for public education. I'm a mom of two kids who attend Puyallup schools, and I have been an active supporter of Puyallup schools for almost two decades now. My family, my husband and I moved to Puyallup when we got married, and we've lived here the whole time and decided to raise our family here. I have been very involved in the bond and levy campaigns because I'm really concerned about the facilities in our district and the overcrowding. Currently, our district has over 200 portables, and I think, you know, other parents can attest, the portable is not like an ideal learning environment for our students. So I'd really like to work on getting our bonds passed and facilities updated so that we no longer need so many portables. I care a lot about public education and the opportunity that it provides to all students to reach their best potential and succeed in whatever path they choose in life. And so I care a lot about making our schools strong. Strong schools are good for our whole community. They raise property values. They make Puyallup a place that people really love to live. And I care a lot about our schools, and I want to make a difference. I've been showing up for Puyallup schools in a lot of different ways for many years now, and so I'm trying something new and running for office. This is my first time running for office, and I feel really called to serve my community in this way. There's a lot of problems going on in the world that I can't solve, but I do feel like I have the skills and experience and passion to be of service to my community in this way. I'm really looking forward to possibly serving on the Puyallup School Board, and I encourage everyone to remember to vote on November 4.
Thank you. Now, Melissa Bedford, your opening statement, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Melissa Bedford, and I am running for Puyallup School Board, Position One. I am running to bring an educator's voice to the table. I am a current classroom teacher. I teach fifth grade up in South Seattle, so I commute from the South Hill to South Seattle every day. It's a great time. Podcasts and audiobooks are amazing for that. But I have spent so much time within the realm of public education. I've been a classroom teacher primarily at Title One low-income schools. I have been a professor in education at Eastern Washington University. I've also been an elected school board member on the Spokane Public School Board before my family and I moved over to the west side of the state. And so with everything happening in public education right now, I believe it's more important than ever to have someone with that firsthand experience in education on our school boards, someone who really understands what it's like to be in a classroom every single day. Right now, we have parents and business folks and realtors on our board, but we don't have that voice of someone who has taught, who knows what happens when you have 20-plus little humans in front of you and how you build relationships and support them and their families every single day. And for me, what I want to focus on on the Puyallup School Board is continuing to advocate for fully funding our schools, especially when it comes to services like special education. If you aren't aware of the news, they just fired a bunch of people from the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitation Services at the federal level, and it's only a matter of time that that has a greater impact at the local level. So making sure that we are fighting for fully funding is so important. Also advocating for our bonds and levies because every student and educator has the right to facilities that support learning and making sure that we are being transparent and communicating with our communities. As I've been on the doors, that's something I've heard a lot, and I want to bring that voice, that educator voice, and help communicate with our community and build a strong Puyallup School District.
Thank you. And now David Berg, your opening statement, please.
Hello. So yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to answer questions from my constituents and to share what I believe is important for our district. My three sons all graduated from the Puyallup School District. They attended from K through 12, had fantastic experiences at a variety of schools, started at Spinning, at Meeker, at Stewart, Callis, and PHS, and were just tremendously well-served by our teachers. It's been an honor to volunteer in so many classrooms over the years and now to serve on the school board for the last four years. When I ran four years ago, what I talked about was making sure that we worked on improving communications between the district and our community, on ensuring our leadership was accountable and responsive to our community, and that I would be an advocate for our children, for our teachers, and for our families. I think that I've followed through on all of those promises. We've worked very hard on a number of very challenging issues in Puyallup over the last four years. Our transportation system several years ago was really failing our students. We had students on a regular basis who were missing school because we weren't able to get reliable transportation there. To fix that problem wasn't just a question of adding more buses, it was a question of revamping our entire transportation system. And it was also a question where we needed to look at revamping our bell times for all of our schools so that a transportation system could actually work. That was a process that took a full year, requiring a significant amount of parental involvement, student involvement, teacher involvement, to come up with a solution that worked for everyone, our community. Continuing that process, holding people accountable, making sure that our community has a voice in the process, and that we speak out to find the right solution that works for everyone, it's my plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And now William Rowland, your opening statement, please.
Hello, my name is William Rowland. You can visit my website at willrowland.com. I have a focus on the actual academics, the focus on academics, but we also have to look at the financial standpoint. We've seen a deterioration in our voters to support our levies and our bonds, and I think it goes to a deeper root, you know, the trust into what we're doing. So a little problem that can be easily resolved is going to be becoming more transparent. And I believe that if we understand that the Supreme Court in 1925 ruled, okay, that the parental rights is, okay, a right, and that we need to include our parents in the activities that we're doing as a district and make sure that the decisions we make are financially responsible as well as focused on the academics. So my belief and a good board member is someone that can work across all aspects, look for the truth, look for what is right, and make a decision that is based on our children, the safety of our staff, and the financial responsibility for our voters. Now, the only way that I think we're going to be able to do this is take a hard look at what the actual expenditures are. Let's make sure that we are focused on our spending that is, I'll say, targeting the academic success of our kids. I have a special niece daughter, she's on an IEP, and just recently, okay, she has actually continued to get better, and it's because of individual type of instruction that is tailored to how she learns. And I think that if we bring this a little bit deeper into the rest of the school district, that we can make a difference and focus on the excellence of education.
Thank you. Now we will begin the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond. The candidate speaking first on each question will rotate. Since Ellen Aronson gave the first opening statement, we will begin questions with Melissa Bedford. Like many Washington school districts, the Puyallup School District expenditures are higher than incoming revenue. State funding has been insufficient, and federal funding is declining or uncertain. The district has implemented a budget restoration process to get ahead of the budget shortfall. In your opinion, what is the role of the school board director to assist with budget restoration? So we'll start with Melissa Bedford.
I believe the school board has a very significant role in budget restoration. One of the main responsibilities of a school board director is to approve the budget. And so making sure that we are deep diving, looking into where expenditures are going, and making sure we're focusing on student-centered decisions to support our students and teachers in the classroom, that's where we need to make our investments. And so when I think about budget restoration, it's not just seeing where we're spending the money, but how we can spend money more efficiently, which can also involve partnering with other organizations and the city and the county so that we can provide the best services for all of our students, to fully wrap around students and meet their individual needs and support them both academically, physically, and emotionally.
Thank you. David Berg, same question.
So the Puyallup School Board actually adopted a resolution to outline our role in the budget restoration process. And the idea of that resolution, what came from me? There were some other directors who were a little bit reluctant to sign on initially because they didn't want to bear the brunt of criticism for cuts that might need to be made on down the line. As a school, as a school board, we need to own the changes that are going to be coming to the school district. There are probably going to be programs at work that we're not going to be able to sustain because there are other things that better. So when we're talking about the budget restoration process, first, it's extremely important that we're very transparent throughout the process, that we're working closely with our teachers, with our staff, with our students, to make sure that we're figuring out where we're getting the best return for the money that we're investing in our education and making sure that we communicate why we're making the changes that we're going to be making. Things aren't always going to be popular, that's the reality, but that doesn't mean that those aren't things that need to be done.
Thank you. William Rowland?
Well, I kind of mentioned it in my open statement, but the shortfall, I think, can be aggressively looked at as to where are we spending our money? And so many times, I've seen the district to where they've spent funds on things that didn't really have to be. Now, granted, now we have issues because the state government has already passed the Clean Building Law, which means that there's a lot of expenditures going to happen there. And so we're going to have to make hard decisions. But the only way to do it is to focus on what the, what our charter is, and that's academics. And then the next, I would say, is going to be the safety, you know? And we already, okay, have done a good job supporting our teachers because I know we're in probably the top 10, okay, of compensation for our teachers. So I think the public has actually presented, you know, the fact that they're willing to support our school, but we need to go and make sure that our expenditures are going to be focused on the academic standpoint.
Thank you. Ellen Aronson?
Yeah, so the role of the school board in approving and overseeing the budget is one of their most important jobs. And so I do think the school board needs to be very active in setting out the priorities for the budget restoration plan. I know that the resolution that was approved talked about how we're going to focus on like reductions as opposed to like wholesale elimination of programs, and I really think that's a strong approach. I also want to caution that like the school board should be really involved in like setting the priorities and holding the line, but also we need to make sure that we're involving educators and administrators and education support professionals and other people who are on the front lines to make sure that we're not making decisions that are disconnected from the actual needs of students and educators to do their job successfully. So I think it's a matter of like oversight, but making sure that we're getting input from all stakeholders and that we're being really transparent and clear about what decisions are being made and the rationale behind them.
Thank you. Although the overall student enrollment is expected to remain flat in coming years, the district is projecting an increase of 600 students in the next six years. Enrollment is higher in the high schools, grades 10 to 12, and early elementary grades K through three. What investments do you think the district should consider to manage the increased student enrollment? We'll start with David Berg.
So I think the enrollment estimates that you have there might be a little bit conservative. Historically, the district has tried to side on the conservative side when it came to projecting enrollment so that we didn't overspend our budget, overcommit to staffing that we couldn't support. But realistically, we don't physically have space for the students that we have now, and we're looking at adding, like you say, between 600, maybe as many as 1,000 more students in the next few years. Realistically, that means that we need to be looking very seriously at how we can pass a bond. We need to add an elementary school. There's simply no place to shuffle kids around that's going to work. We've got some aging facilities that really are not sustainable. It's going to cost us more to maintain them than it would to replace in some cases. So we need to really be looking at what we can do to make sure that we've added capacity. Portables aren't a solution. Portables were a short-term answer, and we've got so many portables now, it's really an embarrassment. We need to make sure that we've added facilities to make room for our students. There's really not another choice.
Thank you. William Rowland?
So I want to start off by bringing up a statistic from the OSPI. The Puyallup School District, according to the Office of Superintendent Instruction, actually has, okay, the school district out of approximately 19 students, okay, per class. Now, of course, in 2020, we saw a drop of, I believe, somewhere right around 2,250 students out of the actual district. Even today, we're still about 1,000 students below what we were in 2019. So I understand that we have some crowding in some of our classes, but it also shows that we've already got a growth capability to the 600 or maybe even up to 1,000 already. So I think it's actually utilizing our resources and our buildings, okay, in a more efficient way is going to help make a difference because, like I said, our voters don't really trust us. That's why they're not supporting the bonds and things, and I don't think it's a messaging issue. I think it's an actual financial issue. So I would say that, you know, we need to go ahead and reevaluate the things that we have and be able to focus on, I'm sorry, be able to focus on the things we have, you know, and utilize them in a better way.
Thank you. Ellen Aronson?
Yeah, so at the last school board meeting, it was reported that the current enrollment count is 400 and students over what they predicted for this. So our schools are over capacity now, and as was mentioned, there we're going to be seeing an increase of students. Puyallup is a great place to live and raise your family, and people are moving here. People are moving into apartments and homes. There's new development all over, and Puyallup School District is experiencing enrollment, and we do need to find a place for those students. You know, there's, right now, there's a committee studying the potential closure of Waller Road and Spinning because they've reached the end of their life, and it is more costly to maintain than to rebuild. And, you know, that's almost 800 students in our community that will not have a place to go to school. And, you know, my son goes to Fruitland Elementary, and it's already full. We don't have room to absorb Waller Road students. So we do need to figure out a way to express to voters the need, the critical need to expand our facilities so that we can maintain capacity for our current students and the projected growth, like mentioned, for we have so many portables. And as a parent, a portable is not the ideal learning environment for my kid, and I'd really like to reduce our reliance on those in Puyallup School District.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford?
So I also believe that we need to be investing in strategy behind passing our bonds because when you actually look at the results, over 60% of the voters did say yes in supporting the bond. So the voters do support the investments in our schools. Unfortunately, it didn't make the threshold of the turnout that was needed to validate the election results. So it means making sure that we are partnering with other organizations, our unions, bringing jobs to our communities, to our families, so that way we're really getting the word out there, so really focusing and investing in the strategy so we can make sure our bonds pass because we need the facilities. One of my routes to and from South Seattle is Shaw Road, and I've been driving past those apartments that now are being leased out and a new department, a new apartment complex is being built, and all those kids are going to Shaw Road. And so not only do we need to invest in our buildings, we need to invest in our teachers because teacher burnout is real, and we are seeing teachers leave the profession, leaving our district at alarming rates. So making sure that we are showing we support them and investing in them is also important.
Thank you. So following on to the last question, the Capital Facilities Plan is a six-year plan to bring the buildings in the district to a level of service standards for class sizes. The Facilities Plan is dependent on a future bond measure in November 2026. Considering that recent bond measures failed to pass due to voter turnout, as was mentioned, what are your recommendations to ensure that the next bond measure will be successful? We'll start with William Rowland.
Well, probably one of the most important things is the transparency and showing, okay, the voters exactly where that fund, where those funds are going to go. I'm not saying that the information that came out on the last two, okay, bond measures, okay, did not give information, but it's evident that it did not reach, okay, the minds of the voters. And even though they may have gotten a 60% yes vote, the biggest thing is, is nobody wanted to vote. Nobody wanted to support what was there. So I think it's important that we engage with our voters and our parents and so forth in order to have them understand in greater detail about what is important to their kids. And then the other thing is, is that when somebody understands how something affects them, they're more on task to support it. So it's important that we get to that point of communication with our voters.
Thank you. Ellen Aronson?
Yeah, so I was a community member that served on the Bond Advisory Committee in the fall of 2024 and helped design the bond package that we took to voters. And I was also really involved in the Citizens Committee to vote yes. And we worked extremely hard to educate our community about the critical needs that our district had and the reasons that voting for the bond this year was really important and critical. It was really disappointing that we didn't reach that voter threshold, and I think for next time, the strategies that I would want to employ would be making sure that we do a better job of engaging the specific communities where the, of the schools that are on the bond. So making sure that everyone who, you know, if the bond were to be the same, you know, everyone who goes to Waller Road, Spinning, Mountain View, the three comprehensive high schools, and anyone in the new catchment area for the elementary school would be really engaged and really involved about how the bond will affect them and their families. I also think needing, continuing to expand our engagement with the stakeholder groups like the staff unions and administrators, PTA groups, and the business roundtables in our community would be the best way that we can continue to amplify the message for the needs for the bond.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford?
So one of the things, going back to my previous answer of being strategic on how we run bonds and when we run them, statistically, we wouldn't have hit the, historically, Puyallup has actually never reached the threshold of the 40%. And because it's based on the previous November election, that was a presidential election, which presidents always have the highest turnout. So statistically, it was actually near impossible to get that 40%. So that's why we also need to be thoughtful of when we are running our bonds, not just how we're running them, but when we are running them. I also previously mentioned a partnering with unions. You know, I'm proud to be endorsed by the Pierce County Central Labor Council and other endorsements from South Town Building Trades. And when I've met with these folks, they've said, you know, we knew the bond was happening, but we didn't really get a lot of information. So as we are doing our campaigning, getting out there with our local unions, because this means jobs for them, this means jobs for our community. So employing the families of the students attending our schools is a very powerful message, and I think we need to do more partnerships.
Thank you. David Berg?
So had the results we had in the 2025 elections happened in 2024, 2023, or 2022, we would have passed the bond each of those years. The problem that we faced was, as Dr. Bedford pointed out, trying to validate off of the 2025, or sorry, 2024 presidential election. That proved too big of a barrier to cross. The reason we didn't run the bond when we did is because we were eligible for up to nearly $160 million in state matching funds. Should we have passed the bond in 2024, that we're not going to, that should we, that if we had passed it in 2025, we would have been eligible for those funds. We're not going to be eligible for those funds because the way that the state calculates things is going to be based off of an error during the time COVID. So I'm very proud of the work that our Facilities for the Future team did in communicating what the bond would do, the impact it would have on each of our schools. They've actually done some award-winning work to communicate. We've been at schools across the district, and I look forward to continuing to speak with our community members and demonstrate the need.
Thank you. If someone in the audience has a question, please text to 425-765-5388. So the next question, according to the Student Demographics page on the district site, more than 16% of the student population participated in special education programs as of October 2024. Considering budget constraints and all the open positions, what ideas do you have to maintain and improve special education services? We'll start with Ellen Aronson.
Special education is a really important part of the services that our district provides to the community. Those students and families are counting on us to provide those services that their students deserve. In light of the recent cuts at the federal level to special education support, I think we're going to have to work even harder as a district to make sure that we prioritize and invest in those students and families. Those are really difficult jobs. I have friends who are special ed teachers in our district, and they work extremely hard with limited resources to do their jobs. And so we need to continue to make sure that as a district, we are providing the supports and resources so that that can, is a job that's sustainable and staff members are not getting burned out. We need to make sure that we have good communication with them about the kinds of resources that they're lacking and that they need to be able to better do their jobs. The jobs that special ed teachers do are, is just, it's so important, and it is definitely a priority to make sure that we are serving that student population.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford?
So I will tie back to my previous answer of we need to be investing in our teachers and our educators. When it comes to special education, you know, by law, special education teachers are supposed to have a certain amount of cases on their caseload. And we are seeing, one- one special education teacher with a caseload, the equivalent of two to two and a half full-time equivalent people. So we are putting so much on their plates and not giving them not only the resources, but the bodies they need, the other people to support them. And within students who uh, have special education and have different needs, you know, it's a spectrum of the kind of needs that they have. And so you can have more extended resource where they're gonna need those one-on-one paras and having that very targeted support as well as students with identified learning disabilities where they're gonna need more accommodations when it comes to like small group settings. So investing in the people and knowing that we have their back, especially as school board directors, is vital.
Thank you. David Berg.
So there absolutely is a spectrum of needs um, in our special education population. Uh, one of the things that I think we can do uh, that will help us for the long term is to try and focus um, some interventions on our younger students uh, as early as possible. Um, the more we can do for students early on, the less we need to do to try and catch them up later on. Uh, if we're able to get uh, students prepared at a young age and can uh, transition them into full-time in a general education classroom, that's gonna free up resources in other places. Now, that's not always possible. Um, sometimes there are still going to need to be some additional uh, targeted supports for these students. Uh, but for many of our students, what they need is to get set on the right track early. The more that we can do for those students, um, when they're first entering our program, the better off they're going to be at every grade level from that point on. Um, hopefully we're able to um, address those solutions or address those students' needs uh, wherever they are. Uh, but beginning early is absolutely critical to making uh, a successful uh, education for them.
Thank you, William Rowland.
Uh, this is actually a subject that is near to my heart. It was uh, I have a fourteen-year-old in the Puyallup School District, been on an IEP ever since pre-K. My wife and I, okay, have worked very hard, okay, with her. Um, during the COVID shutdowns, of course, we knew she, we cannot let her relax, if you will. And so we kept pushing her. So for a child that should have been reading and doing math and everything, she couldn't read, she couldn't do any math. So that the year that she was out, we worked with her in different ways and she was able to read, okay, pre-K type of books. And then she was able to do basic math. And so the, what I'm saying here is that if, if we don't have the budget, we don't have the budget. So the things that we're gonna have to do is make these decisions that are gonna be worked with the parents and then work with maybe some nonprofits to come in and help us. Because we're not going to produce money that we don't have. But we cannot let these students fall to the wayside and fall farther behind in their education. Thank you.
Thank you. The Puyallup School District is uh, searching for a new superintendent. What is your vision for district leadership moving forward? And how will you help with the transition to a new superintendent? We'll start with Melissa Bedford.
I am very excited to be a part of this process and you know, see all that's going into choosing a new superintendent for the Puyallup School District. Cause really, this person not only leads the district and the staff, but is a leading face in the community. And you know, recently, when I attended the last school board meeting, there was a comment that someone had said where it was, well, I don't care what their experience is, as long as they're a leader, they know how to work with a budget and have a business mind. And one other piece that I'm drawing a blank on at the moment, but to me, that like, there was no mention of having an education background. And again, right now, I think it's imperative that we have people who are leading our school districts that understand education, that know what it's like to be in the classroom. I absolutely agree. We need someone who is a strong leader, who can communicate, who understands business and budget. We also need someone who knows education and I look forward to helping find that person for the Puyallup School Board, or School District.
Thank you. David Berg.
So it's absolutely essential that a superintendent have superb communication skills. Um, there's going to be a lot of challenging decisions that they need to make. Uh, they need to be very uh, clear about why we're doing what we're doing. Um, so communication skills are vital. Uh, it's very important that they be community builders. Uh, as Dr. Bedford said, we've got a community that needs to be brought together to support our schools, being able to work with the community, communicate with the community, uh, understand uh, what we can do to build community support for our schools and our programs. Again, essential. Uh, I'm absolutely looking for an education and teaching background. I want someone who's had experience in the classroom so that when we're talking to our teachers, uh, when we're coming up with ideas for what to do next, uh, that they know what that life is like. Um, and I would also like to see someone who's had experience as a leader in large districts. Puyallup is about the sixth largest district in the state. Uh, we need to have someone who's able to deal with an organization of our size. Um, it's, it's really challenging to turn something around that's our size. Um, and having experience dealing with uh, organizations of that size is vital.
Thank you. William Rowland.
So there, there is one thing that, I mean, I haven't heard yet, okay, um, here, but I think it's important to have. You see, the problem with most situations that any business owner or larger organization CEO faces is decision-making. And we do need somebody that's gonna be a superintendent that understands our ed, the education system. They also need to understand how to work for people. But they also need to be able to make hard decisions, okay, that is based on truth and facts, okay, and not so-called peer pressure. So it's gotta have somebody that is strong, that is strong-willed. Also, that's got the decision-making process to have a good analytics of what is being presented and make sure that it meets the three main criteria. Academics, safety, and economic sense. They gotta be able to do that. And that's one way that we would be able to build the trust back with the community that we're supposed to be serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Aronson.
Um, the things that I'm looking for as I would help with a superintendent hiring process are someone with an education background. Like others have said already, I think it's really important that um, the superintendent has classroom experience so that they know that the, how the decisions we're making as a school board and an administration affect the um, teachers in the classroom. I think that's really critical. Think strong communication and community building skills are important. Um, for me, I think it's really important that our superintendent is someone who is going to live in our community. I think when you have a vested interest and the decisions that you make at work are impacting your family at home or on the dinner table, I think that's a really meaningful thing. And so I'm looking for someone who's um, willing to, who lives in our community or is willing to relocate and be part of our community that they're leading. Um, we're a really large district and I agree with um, David that um, someone with experience in a district of our size is extremely critical. Um, I know that our prior superintendent, I was a parent at those meetings, um, when we were doing that hiring process and prior superintendent came from a smaller school district and I think that that um, was a challenge. And so that's something I'm looking for in the next superintendent.
Thank you. Next question, if you're elected to the board, what are some advocacy actions you would take with state, county, and city governments to maintain and improve funding operations and capital investments for the district? We'll start with David Berg.
So I've been an education advocate for more than twenty years. It's been who I am and what I do. Uh, one of the things that I've done on the school board is served as our legislative representative, which means that I'm communicating uh, the progress of legislation during the session to our board members, um, to our staff, uh, to our students, um, who have been uh, tremendous advocates in, in their own right. Uh, I've been a member of WASDA's uh, Leadership Cadre who has testified in Olympia in support of education funding issues, uh, in particular about special education funding. We've also uh, worked hard with our legislators on issues surrounding transportation funding. Uh, we pressed them on uh, adequate funding for material supplies and operating costs. Uh, all of those things are areas where we've made progress, uh, but there's not enough progress yet. Uh, it's not an easy thing to do, uh, but it's not something that we can give up on. Uh, being an advocate means you're persistent, means you keep at it. Uh, and when you don't get the first year, you come back for and ask for the next year. And if it doesn't happen in year two, I'm back there in year three.
Thank you. William Rowland.
So the, be, being an advocate for education, I think is imperative to be a good uh, school board member. But the one thing that, you know, we need to do is um, pay attention to the things that are being brought to the floor in Olympia because they affect us. Like I mentioned, the uh, the Clean Building Act. And so we need to make sure that we are communicating with the lawmakers and other uh, entities that are making decisions that impact our budget and our capabilities and make sure that we express what those issues are and what they're going to do to our district. Because Puyallup being a large district, we can be that light, okay, that other smaller districts can look at how we did things. And then they can actually implement those as well. So my thought is, is that we have to have a better communication to advocate for our kids and for our district and, and make sure that our, our sight of what we see is going on and what it could do to our district is communicated with the lawmakers.
Thank you. Ellen, uh, Ellen Aronson.
Yeah, so my first job out of college was working for the nonpartisan staff at the state legislature. I worked for the House Capital Budget and Finance Committees. And so the legislative process is uh, uh, the, near and dear to my heart. And if I was elected to the board, I would hope to um, be one of the representatives from the board to the legislature. I think that um, continuing to advocate for Puyallup School District and public education in general is a huge responsibility that the board needs to um, be in, um, you know, have an active part of their responsibility. I think we need to do a better job of advocating um, like explaining to the community what's happening so that they can also help advocate, right? Being sort of a legislative alert to say like, hey, this is what's happening in Olympia. Our representatives need to hear from you. Here's the, how this potential legislation could affect Puyallup and now we need you to help, um, you know, make your voice heard about this issue. So I think we can do a better job sort of being a link between um, Olympia and our community. Uh, but I think continuing to advocate for um, funding reform at the state level so that the burden of school funding is not on local taxpayers is of utmost importance.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford.
So as I previously mentioned, I served on the school board over in Spokane. And so for the last five-plus years, I have been a part of lobbying efforts in Olympia, both with the organization WASDA, Washington State School Directors Association, as well as through my union, Washington Education Association. And one strength I feel I bring to advocating for education is I have relationships across the state because we have to look beyond just lobbying our local electeds because yes, we'll have relationships with them. But it takes more than their votes to make change happen at the, at the legislature. So I have that strength of having relationships with our elected leaders in Spokane and Eastern Washington, as well as other school board directors. And one of the things not many folks know is school board directors are the most elected position in Washington State. There's almost fifteen hundred of school board directors. And so building those relationships and being that connector and working together to best advocate for education, I believe, is how we make change happen.
Thank you. So the next question, in your opinion, what are some of the changes needed to improve collaboration between the school board, administration, school staff, and community? We'll start with William Rowland.
Well, one, one of the first things that has to happen in order to have communication is you have to have the ability to listen. And then we have to be able to uh, take what we hear and observe, I mean, all of the facts, work together for a common goal. That's really what the whole, I'll call, basic steps that has to be done. Now, that's a complicated process still. Because you have several different opinions and several different wants, okay, that wants to come in. But as long as that the school board and all of the administration works together towards the main goal, the main charter of the district, and that is education, and providing an academic success, then we shouldn't have any issues, okay, with our negotiations and working towards a common goal. So I think that the communication, but it has to have an open dialogue to make sure that the information that you're, I guess I would say, fighting for is based on facts and it's also based on what is going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Aronson.
Yeah, I think listening is obviously a really important job for uh, leaders and for people who are coming together to try to collaborate and make progress happen, especially in a complicated environment like a school district where you have a lot of different stakeholders whose views and concerns uh, need to be represented. I think making sure that we're showing up at the table um, ready to listen and ready to respect the p, the other people in the conversation, I think is really important. I think um, you know, we've had some challenges in our district, especially between the administration and the staff unions that has led to a lot of breakdown and distrust. And I think um, we need to work um, harder to make sure that those um, conversations come from a place of mutual respect and that we are all remembering, right? The main priority is about serving students, educators, and families in Puyallup School District and making sure that everyone's showing up with that um, a sort of common goal as the through line to the decisions that are being made.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford.
So one of the, the common themes that I've heard that I agree with is listening. I believe every elected leader or any leader for that matter should be someone who is open to listening, cause that's how we learn. And not only do we need to listen to our community, our students, our families, right? We really need to listen to our teachers. And I think that's where a disconnect happens as I've been talking to educators throughout the district, both classroom teachers and our paraprofessionals. They don't feel heard. Uh, just recently, I had a teacher reach out to me because I, for my personal classroom, posted a Donors' Choose to get some supplies because my district doesn't have funding for our supplies either. And they said, did you know that we in Puyallup School District are not allowed to use Donors' Choose? And I actually looked it up. There is a policy that prevents the use and it went back to saying that you should use things like Amazon Smile. So guess what? Amazon Smile doesn't exist anymore. So making sure we are truly listening to our educators and what they need, I think, is so important for that collaboration piece.
Thank you. Uh, David Berg.
So one of the first major actions we did after I was elected was actually put together a strategic plan. And that part of that strategic plan uh, involves family and community engagement. Uh, it involves staff development, community, and culture. Those were things that are part of our strategic plan because of the people from our community, from our staff, uh, that were involved in helping us put together that strategic plan. We invited the community to help us um, put together the things that they most valued. We put that into our plan. Um, repeatedly, uh, we've had the opportunity to put together community members, uh, staff, uh, students to help advise us on challenging issues facing our district. We've had our school capacity utilization task force looking at how we try and house the students that we have in our existing facilities, uh, given all the limitations we have. We've had our Bond Advisory Committee. We've had our Bell Time Task Force. Uh, time and time again, we've turned to our community to help give us the advice, their experience. Um, and it's led to better decision-making. That's something that I'm very proud of and something I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Uh, this will be our last question. How do you envision helping the most vulnerable students achieve success and graduate, especially those who are unhoused, migrants, live in foster care, or have disabilities? What programs and supports should the district expand or implement to help these students succeed? We'll start with Ellen Aronson.
I think in light of the current budget situation, the conversations regarding the programs that support these student populations that you mentioned are just gonna be increasingly important. I think that we need to make sure that as we're making hard budget conversations, that we're not leaving these kids and families to fall through the cracks. Um, it's very important that um, kids who are already at high risk are not being forgotten as we, you know, sort of right-size and reevaluate the funding decisions in our district. I think we need to continue to make sure that we're supporting families. It's easier to um, show up to school and be successful if you have a bed to sleep in and food to eat and a ride to school and stable family life. Um, so I think continuing to invest in those programs is important. And I think that might um, require, you know, community partnerships um, to make those things happen. But I think that those are really important and need to be a priority um, as we move forward and talk about the current budget situation.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford.
Research continues to show the significant impact of wraparound services to support our most, most vulnerable students. And that means investing in our teachers so that they can have those smaller class sizes and build relationships. That means partnering with organizations like communities and schools to provide additional services if needed for families. I also believe that we have so much potential in further partnerships with our city, the city of Puyallup, as well as the county. Because the more that we can create those services together, one, it makes it a little bit of a less, you know, a little less a dip into our piggy bank because we're, we're having mutual investment. But it also just builds that community. One of the things in Spokane that I got to see was the establishment of onsite, school-based health facility, health clinics and services. And that brought the services to the families. So making those types of investments and partnerships, I believe, is how we can really support our most vulnerable students.
Thank you. David Berg.
The schools are at a really tough point right now. So many people turn to schools as a hub of their community, looking to schools for supports that traditionally would come from other environments. We need to be very careful as a district that we provide everything that we can while realizing that our first part, of course, is, is education. But education doesn't happen when students are hungry. It doesn't happen when students aren't sure where they're going home, where their home is going to be that night. It doesn't happen when they've got significant issues with needing social, emotional support. So we can't turn our back to those things. We do need to look for other community organizations, community partnerships. We need to rely on our county to step up, in particular with regards to mental health supports. There've been some recent passages of additional taxes to provide support for mental health issues in Pierce County. We would love to be able to take advantage of that as a school district, because people rely on our schools, but schools can only do so much. It needs to be all of us in this together for our students.
Thank you. William Rowland.
Alex, I hear a theme here and I think we're all on the same page. And I want to say thank you to all of you candidates. But, you know, it is about community and it is about working with nonprofits. Because like I said before, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. But having a child that's been, that's received benefits, okay, from some of the special education environment that's available, I see the need with it. So if we can teamwork with other entities that are either nonprofit, the county, even the state, okay, to ensure that we have the food, for example. I mean, we can't give housing, okay? But we can give them food while they're there. We can give them compassion, you know, towards their, their needs and towards them psychologically. But we, we also, you know, have to understand that we don't have a bottomless piggy bank. So we have to become more of a steward, okay, of working with others and other community and entities to use their capabilities along with us. And then we'll be able to truly make a difference, okay, for these kids that are in need, okay, of extra help.
Thank you. Now we will go to the closing statements in reverse order than the opening statements. Each candidate will have one minute. So William Rowland, we'll start with you.
Well, I thank you guys for putting this together. I think it's important that the community gets a chance to hear, okay, the viewpoints of the candidates that are running. Because we do make a big difference in their lives, their kids. And the education system is not just for today. It's our future generation that we're training. And so we have to make decisions, okay, that are outwardly focused. And we have to make sure that we still keep those three primary things in mind. That is, safety, and then of course, financial and academics. We have to keep all three of those in mind when we're making decisions. And I think that being a business owner for 25 years, that I have the capability to look at things in an objective way. We made it through COVID. We made it through the shutdowns, okay, I'm sorry, the downturn in the economy in 2008. But the only way we do it is by making hard decisions and not losing our sight on what our job is and making sure that we're still taking care of customers, even if it's hard on us. Thank you.
Thank you. David Berg.
Yeah, there are a lot of negative headlines targeting education these days, talking about how we're failing our students in so many different ways. In the Puyallup School District, last year, we had record numbers of students receiving certificates in the different CTE fields, career and technical education fields. They're leaving our schools ready to go to career-ready jobs. We've had record numbers of students taking on advanced placement AP classes and record numbers of students succeeding in those classes and getting college credit. We're doing a fantastic job for our students. We can always do better. We can always continue to improve. But I'm really proud of what the Puyallup School District is doing for our students these days. We've got a lot of challenges coming ahead. You know, clearly, we need to figure out how to deal with our capacity concerns. Those are real. They're not going away. And just rearranging the desk chairs isn't going to do it for us. But we're doing great things here in Puyallup and I'm very proud of the teachers that do that work every day, the students, and the families that support them.
Thank you. Melissa Bedford.
First, thank you again, Carla, for moderating, Noel for being our timer, and Cynthia for arranging this opportunity and to my fellow candidates for joining tonight. Again, my name is Dr. Melissa Bedford. I'm running for Puyallup School Board, position one. And I'm running to bring that educator's voice. As you heard, I talked a lot about that. And so one of the things I just want to remind folks is ballots actually come out this weekend. So make sure you're keeping an eye on your mailboxes. I also want to point out that because of federal cuts, USPS has been having some challenges there. So there's recommendation to drop your ballots in the mail by October 30th. If you are choosing to mail them in, to make sure they get that postmark in time by election day. Otherwise, you, of course, always have your handy-dandy drop boxes that are around our town. So look those up if you're not sure. And if you want to learn more about me, please visit my website at www.electbedford.com. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity. And I look forward to seeing everyone at the ballot boxes.
Thank you. And Ellen Aronson.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity to share a little bit about our perspective and why we'd be a good candidate for the Puyallup School Board. Again, my name is Ellen Aronson and I'm running for position one. I have been an advocate of public education my entire life and specifically a vocal advocate for Puyallup Schools for almost two decades. I send my two kids to Puyallup Schools every day. I put them on the bus. I expect them to come home at the end of the day, so I can give them a hug. I care deeply for the success of my kids and all kids in our district. And I really am appreciative of this opportunity to serve my community in this way. I'm proud to be the only candidate that has bipartisan support because even people who don't agree with me know that I'm gonna show up and get to work and can collaborate with other board members to make real progress and change happen for our school district. So I'm really proud of that. I hope everyone remembers to vote on November 4th. And if you'd like to find out more about me, you can go to my website at electlmpsd.com. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the candidates for participating in this forum and to the audience for watching. The candidates for Puyallup School District School Board Director, position one, are Ellen Aronson and Melissa Bedford. And for position four, the candidates are David Berg and William Rowland. Ballots will be mailed on October 17th, as mentioned, and be sure to vote on or before November 4th. Before you vote, go to votewa.org. That's V-O-T-E-W-A dot O-R-G. To check your voter registration or to register if you are not yet registered. This site and the standard voter's guide identify ballot issues and candidate information specific to your own voting precinct. Also, check the candidates' websites for more information. We encourage everyone to use these resources. You'll find our other candidate forums and a link to this recording of this forum at our website, l w v t p c dot O R G, elections slash voting. That's L W V T P C dot O R G. Select the option elections slash voting on the main page. Thank you to the candidates, the timekeeper, and the Zoom moderator, and to you, our audience, for watching.